Good evening. Adequate notice of this special meeting setting forth time, date and location is provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act on August 23rd, 2021 by prominently posting a copy on the bulletin board in the lobby of the offices of the Board of Education, which is a public place reserved for such announcements, transmitting a copy of this notice to the record, The Wayne Today, TapIntoWayne.net and the municipal clerk. We're going to rise for the flag salute and a moment of silence for our troops lost in Afghanistan. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Mr. Moffett.
Mrs. Albanese?
Here.
Mr. Bubba?
Here.
Mr. Duffy?
Here.
Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Kazan?
Here.
Mrs. Kumar?
Here.
Mr. Pavlak?
Here.
And Mrs. Putup?
Here.
Okay, at this time, we need to recess and convene an executive session to discuss a matter that's on tonight's agenda. We will come back out with that matter settled and continue the meeting. Hopefully, it will be a brief discussion. So can I get him over to convene?
I'll move.
Mr. Bubba, Mrs. Putup. (end of transcript)[122.11]
Oh, sorry. No. Sorry. One more. No, don't. That's right. It'll be worse.
What's the before? Huh?
I really don't.
See, it's all good. Evening.
One moment, we're waiting for a member. Okay, we seem to be missing a member, but we're gonna get started. We can start and hold off for the vote. The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education Special Meeting of August 26, 2021 was convened in the mayor's conference room of the Wayne Township Municipal Building, 475 Valley Road, Wayne, New Jersey. The statement of compliance setting fourth time, date, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and the roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. Move to reopen?
Second.
Mr. Pavlak, Mr. Giordano. Okay, Mr. Moffett, revisions to the agenda?
Yes, on number one, under the School Resource Finance Section M, I'll read the revised resolution, resolved that the Board of Education approve the 2021 to 2022 contract for special education legal services to DeFrancesco Bateman from August 27, 2021 to June 30, 2022, in the amount of $50,000. And that ends the revisions to tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Okay, since this is a special meeting and there is only two items on the agenda, we're gonna combine the public portions into one. So you can come up to the podium on any matter, but I'll read the statement. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda and general comments. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under old business. Can I get a mover?
Move.
Mrs. Puttup?
Second.
Mr. Giordano.
May I proceed?
Yes.
Jim Frieswick, 1212 Summer Hill Road. I'm here this evening to speak against the proposed, the letter that was drafted, addressed to Governor Murphy, which requests that the mask mandate set forth in Executive Order 251 be rescinded and masks be made optional for all students, staff, and visitors. This letter should not be sent to the governor. I support Governor Murphy's Executive Order 251, which mandates the wearing of masks inside schools, whether they are public, private, or parochial, for the simple reason that we are still in a pandemic, a COVID-19 pandemic, and masks will help prevent the spread of the virus and will help protect people who wear the masks while they're in school. Children under 12 cannot get vaccinated. So a large proportion of students will not be vaccinated just for that reason. In addition, even though students who are aged between the ages of 12 and 17 can get the vaccine, many of them have not been vaccinated. According to the governor's Order 251, only 40% of 12- to 15-year-olds and only 57% of 16- to 17-year-olds have received at least one dose of the COVID-19 vaccine. Both the CDC, the Centers for Disease Control, and the American Academy of Pediatrics have both recommended mandatory mask-wearing in schools, grades K through 12, in order to help protect the students from the COVID-19 disease and in order to prevent people who are infected from spreading it to other people who are not infected. This is a common sense, sensible, lawful order by Governor Murphy, whom I support for reelection in November. And not just because I'm on the ticket with him, as a candidate of the Democratic Party for Wayne Council at Large, which I am.
Mr. Frieswick, can I stop you? You're using irrelevant speech. This is not about the board meeting. Thank you, that's your time.
I support Governor Murphy's Executive Order.
Good evening, everyone.
You need to state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Carol Phillips. I live at 1360 Hamburg Turnpike. I am a retired Wayne schoolteacher, one who had a wonderful career, loved teaching in Wayne, but I just wanted to bring to your attention, I'm out a long time, and I did hope, from the time I left to the present, that Wayne would update itself to making the school system a healthy environment for children and professionals. To expect children with masks or without masks, and professionals, and anyone else related to the school system, to function without air conditioning in the schools is a travesty. I realize it's an expensive proposition, but this is something that should have been started more than 30 years ago. I do not expect you to go into the schools and rewire all the buildings, but I think that with the help of PTOs and hopefully putting a project together with the Wayne Township, that you could bring Wayne to the forefront of having all the schools in the district air-conditioned. You could do window units. You can have rules regarding when it can be turned on, when it can be turned off, but to expect anybody to function in an environment as a professional and as a student when classroom temperatures exceed 80 and 90, and even in cases over 100 degrees. I know I was there. It is unreasonable to expect them to be working to full capacity. I can't imagine anyone here wanting to work in an environment where you are inundated with children who are not happy, who are not functioning, and especially now with COVID, how sad it is that we are not prepared. Climate change, we are all being affected by it. We're having periods of time where the temperatures are higher, the temperatures are lasting longer periods with high temps. Let's get down to business and let's really try to make the Wayne school system a leader in New Jersey where we put forth a project to air-condition our schools. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Katie Shite. I have resided at 11 Shore Road in Wayne since 2007. My partner Bob and I have two children in the Wayne schools in third and sixth grades. I want to thank the members of the board and Dr. Toback for holding this special meeting, and I want to thank the board for their service. I am here tonight to represent the silent minority who agree with the statewide masking mandate. We have heard from several parents and district staff in Wayne that do not feel comfortable under the current circumstances to attend an in-person meeting such as this. They have thanked our group for coming here tonight and represent them. We submit to you a petition of over 1,600 supporters, asking our school district to uphold the New Jersey statewide masking mandate. At this time, we currently have 1,650 signatures. If you have any questions about the petition, or the information contained therein, if you need an electronic version, please feel free to contact me, Dr. Toback's office, and Board President Kathy Kazan have my contact information. I would also like to apologize, because as soon as I am done with my comments, I'll be leaving, because I am uncomfortable standing in a room full of people who are unmasked, because I like to protect my children who are at home. If you're gonna heckle me, I'm gonna add more time to my comments, so I suggest you give me, give me my due. Anybody. Anybody who heckles. Thank you. We would like to keep the schools as safe as possible and open. I call on the board to do an official survey of parents to see which parents in the district are in favor of masking in schools and which parents are not. Thank you.
Ma'am, if you can give that to the business administrator to be entered into the record. Thank you.
Good evening, folks. My name is Pat Mullin. I live at 9 Worcester Drive in Wayne. And thank you, Dr. Toback, we've heard you speak at Wayne Hills, and thank you all of you for your service, I really appreciate it, I want to say that. We moved to Wayne five years ago, based on the education system, so I do want to say that we're very happy, and it's a fantastic town to live in. What I wanted to just ask the board, it's a rhetorical question, is how much research have you done on the effectiveness of masks and what it does to children? So we talk a lot about different things, but do we talk about how effective masks are and what they do to the carbon dioxide level in children? So I'm not gonna read all this, but I just want you to hear a little bit about a study that was done in Germany, Poland, and Austria in March of this year. This is on MSN, by the way, I went to MSN for this. And the study says that it was a study in the Journal of the American Medical Association, and basically they sampled 20 girls and 25 boys between ages of 6 and 17, and what they found is, in Germany, you're not allowed to have more than 2,000 parts per million of carbon dioxide in the room. It's oftentimes 400 parts per million is a typical level of carbon dioxide. They took these students and checked them, you can't hear me? No. Okay, so they checked students that were between the ages of, thank you, 6 and 17, and they checked the carbon dioxide level in their blood, and in the process of checking it, they found that the average level of parts per million of children wearing masks, after study of multiple times, was about 13,000 parts per million. In Germany, 2,000 parts per million or more is reason to not have a student in the room. So I just want you to get a feel for what the level of carbon dioxide is that these kids inhale. So, I know we talk about a lot of different things, but I think we need to look at their health, and that's the only point I want to make, I don't want to belabor it, but again, thank you for all your service, I appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Jacob Van Lunen. My wife and I own and live at 48 Lake Drive East. I graduated from Wayne Valley in 2004 with the Student Council Award. My brothers, and mother, and father, all graduated from Wayne Valley. My grandmother, Grace Church, was head of the English Department at Wayne Hills for decades. I have two kids that are fifth-generation Pakenackers. I support a mask mandate, because experts tell us it's one of the most effective ways to keep school in session. I think that's the most important thing for our kids. I'm confident the vast majority of Wayne parents support a mask mandate. I've wanted to be at more meetings, as I'm sure others have, but it's honestly scary to be here in a crowd that brags about being unvaccinated while refusing to wear masks. In fact, I'm gonna give it a little more than a week after being here before In fact, I'm going to give it a little more than a week after being here before me or my kids hang out with my mother, who's currently battling stage IV cancer and is immunocompromised. I'm also very concerned about the politicization of Board of Ed meetings here in Wayne. The mask mandate comes from the governor, and yet people are here, meeting after meeting, saying that the board is somehow imposing this, even after they're repeatedly told it's a statewide mandate. The board does not, and should not, make political decisions. The board is here to help the children of Wayne by doing clerical work and keeping things running most effectively within a budget. I'm very appreciative of the work they do, as all parents in Wayne should be. Now, there's a group running for Board of Ed in town that's defining themselves with political ambitions and goals. They've even lucked into being at the top of the ticket. There shouldn't be anything political about a mask mandate that's trying to keep schools open. We need to, as a town, reject this out of the mainstream bracketed group that seeks to make the Board of Ed into a politicized entity. I want everyone here to have a crystal-clear understanding of this next point. If this group succeeds and successfully disobeys state mandates, then our schools lose state funding, our property values go down. This group's first foray into local politics was as a mob arguing against an imaginary opponent that had never even been brought up in Wayne by anyone other than themselves. I was here at the June 24 meeting. I saw the ugly side of this movement, cheering as people said things like "diversity is code for anti-white," laughing at a crying teenage girl. Does this bracketed group actually want to deal with the budgeting, and clerical work, and day-to-day of being on the Board of Ed? Or do they just want a soapbox to yell from in an attempt to turn our town into some kind of sideshow with underfunded schools? Ask yourselves. Also, air conditioning in the classrooms, I thought that was a great idea. All right, thank you guys very much. Have a great night.
Donald Chala, 20 Cherry Way, Wayne Valley, class of 2012, Rutgers, class of 2017. I'm here to talk about masks. There's a big misconception about the virus being too small for the masks to filter. While individual viruses, aka virons, are too small for masks not respirators to filter, the virus rarely gets around via virons floating in the air. Instead, SARS-CoV-2 rides in water, saliva, mucus, et cetera, particles in a range of sizes from tiny floating aerosols to visible projectile droplets. I encourage everyone to Google "mask coughing visual" and see for themselves. These droplets and aerosols come in and out of the mouth and nose during talking and breathing, as well as coughing and sneezing. There's no doubt, masks catch the droplets that are larger than their minimum pore size that carry SARS-CoV-2. But masks also catch some of the aerosols that are smaller than their minimum pore size. This is because aerosols don't always have perfect aim to shoot through the little holes in the mask. They get caught in the filter media, because the particles flow according to Brownian motion. They're floating on little air currents. They disperse and dart about randomly in three dimensions. Due to this, the mask catches more than you may imagine in both directions. This works to prevent much of the viral particles in droplets from dispersing into ambient air. The source for this information is Arizona State University, Princeton, and my own coursework and expertise from majoring in chemical engineering at Rutgers. ABC News curated over 40 individually peer-reviewed publications from universities and journals all over the world that shows that masks are effective in what we're using them for. Various methods across these studies: simulations, population comparisons, statistics, advanced models, experiments. Masks catch the larger droplets, some of the smaller aerosols, and reduce remaining aerosol dispersion. Theory, experiment, and observation converge on the conclusion that wearing a mask works effectively, not perfectly, but effectively, to prevent the spread of COVID-19. Let's talk about cases per day here in New Jersey. From Johns Hopkins Medical School, I'm going to be saying some data here. April 2020, tough time for everybody. 3,000 new cases per day, on average. Things took a break during the summer of 2020. People went outside, open windows, UV light from the sun, wind, et cetera. Cases came way down during the summer 2020. This last winter, from November to April this year, 4,500 new cases per day. It was a nightmare. We had a bit of a break this past summer. Things were good. However, this last week, cases have climbed up, 2,000 new cases per day, 90% of which are the twice-as-contagious Delta variant. Neither winter nor school has even started yet.
Sir, sir. Thank you. That's your time.
Thank you.
My name is Ida Ferrante, and I am the president of the Wayne Education Association. The Wayne Education Association and the vast majority of its 886 members overwhelmingly believe that we must take the responsible and cautious path when dealing with the new Delta variant. Those communities that haven't done so have suffered mightily, and as a result of their denial and resistance. At the last meeting, four board members voted to pacify the vocal minority by doing something dangerous. They ignored what they know is reliable science, as well as their legal obligation, and instead bowed to those who believe that their freedom includes the right to endanger and risk the health of others. The educators of this district were rightfully outraged at the actions of these members of the board, who voted to put the lives and health of their staff, their families, and our schools in danger. We ask those members to rethink this reckless decision, and we ask all members of this board to engage in their sworn responsibility to follow the Constitution, the law, and medical advice. As the educators of this district, it is our expectation of this board that they will take the proper measures to ensure the health and safety of our members and children, and withdraw this irresponsible motion. Thank you.
I live in Clifton, and I'm here tonight because I read the article in the Herald News last week, and I was very proud to hear that this board was going to do something. We should have done it a long time ago. I've been going to board meetings in Clifton for the last month, and there's no transparency there. Now, again, I know that up until two weeks ago, three weeks ago, it was going to be an option, so everybody took a backseat and was relaxed. And then he, all of a sudden, decided to make a political move and changed plans. I totally support what you're doing, because I think we need to have a resistance. There's just too much draconian legislation coming down by dictatorial governors and legislators, and not realizing that it's the government of the people, by the people, for the people. They're looking at children as tools. They want to inject them with chemicals that are toxic, aborted fetal parts, aluminum, mercury. Who here would take a glass of water and drink mercury and aluminum, but yet we're going to inject it into our children? Not one shot, two shots, three shots. It was like, two weeks, three weeks, the virus will be away. Now we're here two and a half years. Our officers have to take shots. Teachers have to take shots. Is this America? What are we living in? Forcing our children to wear masks all day long, the gentleman gave a lot of data, I can give a lot of data on the other side. I'm not denying, but if you feel the mask protects you, leave it optional. Wear it. Go get your vaccine and get your shot. And the people that don't want it, let them come in. Wearing masks and vaccinations are child abuse, period. If I had, I had eight children. If I had all my children wearing masks all day long and coming to the Wayne Library like we used to do with masks, the first thing that would happen was everybody would be calling and saying, "There's something wrong with that family. They're wearing masks." I don't believe that. And then you'd question the kids to find out what's going on, and right away you'd be calling DIFUS. So I read the safe schools policy on my board. I commented, very long comments. They had no transparency. There was not one other comment I could read from parents. Everything was kept secret, so I couldn't read any others. That whole safe schools policy is a total draconian policy. You probably have the same thing, it was probably created by the same organization. They're going to indoctrinate your children while they're in school to make them get the vaccine. They're going to encourage them, because they're going to give them mindfulness programs, yoga programs, ventilation programs, so they may get more CO2, because they'll go outside and get some more air, and if you tested them, they probably wouldn't be as bad. But it's all an indoctrination program to change their ways about thinking. This is only the start. This is a factor of freedom, and we have to oppose it, because it's based upon freedom. I hear about air conditioning. Yeah, nobody wants to suffer, but I went to school, and I sweated a little bit. The point is, if we're environmentalists, increasing the air conditioning is only going to increase cost.
Sir.
More CO2, and decrease more of our energy supplies.
It's your time. Thank you.
Reverend Andrew Smith, 34 Lucas Lane in Wayne. I'm a minister of Word and Sacrament, and teaching elder ordained in the Presbyterian Church USA, and pastor of Grace United Presbyterian Church here in town. Moreover, I'm a parent of three children in our school system. Madam President, Dr. Toback, members of the board, while I readily and willingly acknowledge that religious texts cannot and should not be a guide for public policy, at the board meeting last week, a number of our neighbors lovingly suggested that I should open the Bible. And since we've set the precedent of taking instructions shouted from the floor of these chambers, I did just that, and would like to share just a very small sampling of what I found. The prophet Jeremiah, "Seek the shalom, the health, wholeness, and well-being of the city where I have placed you, for in its well-being is yours." Jesus of Nazareth, "Love your neighbor as yourself." The apostle Paul, "In humility, regard others as more important than yourselves. Do not look to your own interests, but to the interests of others." I could keep going almost ad infinitum, but the message is clear. And honestly, we shouldn't need religious texts to tell us that we belong to each other, that our lives and our well-being are bound up together, and that we have an ethical responsibility to look out for and to take care of each other. During a pandemic that is raging, especially in states and districts where schools have opened without mask mandates, that looks like wearing masks and getting vaccinated if and when we can. I urge the board to simply observe the mask mandate and continue the good work you've done, keeping our children, especially our young ones under 12 who can't be vaccinated, safe by voting no on sending this frivolous letter to the governor. By their posturing at the last meeting, some board members have signaled their solidarity with a small but vocal contingent of the public. With the petitions that are out now, it's clear that a significant majority of parents who felt disenfranchised from coming to exclusively in-person, largely unmasked, meetings support masking in schools. I would remind the board that this majority also votes, and will remember who worked to keep our children safely in school, and who played games with their safety and education to score cheap political points. The time for political posturing is over. School starts in two weeks. It's time to do what's in the best interest of all our children and the larger community in which we live. Thank you.
Thank you. That's your time.
My name is Harry Prisakos, Dartmouth Road, Wayne, New Jersey. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but after listening to a prior speaker who mentioned my running mates, I wanted to set the record straight. This is, as you guys know, a nonpartisan position, and I truly take this as a nonpartisan position. I've actually been on both sides of the fence politically, and I want to set the record straight. We denounce racism of any kind, denounce antisemitism, denounce any bigotry, denounce any bullying. I've stood up against bullies my whole life, you know? And for people to accuse me and my running mates of anything that's nonsense, they don't even know me. I grew up in Queens. I'm a son of immigrants, you know? If someone spent 50 years in Wayne, New Jersey, with all white people, it doesn't mean, you know, everyone else is a racist. All my friends are practically the United Nations. So I wanted to set the record straight. You know, we need to have the children in school any way we can. You know, we can be creative as we can. You know, the governor set the mask mandate. As you guys know, the day prior to the governor's mask mandate, I had provided a solution where we could go mask optional based on the thresholds. Back in June, Wayne had 13 cases of COVID. You know, it was 95 degrees. You know, with 13 cases out of 55,000 residents, I believe the kids should have been able to not have their masks on. And so I just want to leave that statement, and I wanted to also let people know, based on those defamatory statements, we'll have our attorneys look into that.
I'm Heidi Remple. I live at 26 New Street, but this evening, I'm not reading my own perspective. I'm going to read a statement on behalf of Dr. Mario Coletti of 7 Berry Drive, who can't be here this evening, but wanted to make his voice heard. "Good evening, board members, Dr. Toback, and Mrs. Reichman. I am on vacation with my family, so cannot be present in person, but still want my opinion heard. I want to state my strong opposition to this letter and the position four members of the board have taken. Firstly, if we were having this discussion in early July, I would have been on the side of making masks optional, but the situation has changed a great deal since then, just as things have done over the past year and a half. Now, we are seeing a surge of cases from a more contagious variant of the virus that quite possibly may affect children more seriously, which threatens what I think is everyone's goal, namely, to keep classrooms open for the upcoming year. This variant is causing an unprecedented strain on the healthcare system in hard-hit states, like that we also experienced in the spring of 2020. We are seeing pediatric intensive care units with cases of respiratory COVID in numbers that have not been seen since this pandemic started. Cases are spreading in schools, resulting in thousands of students having to quarantine and classrooms having to close. While no scientific study is perfect, and many regarding masks do have flaws, the latest analysis in JAMA, the Journal of the American Medical Association, as well as a large study in schools from North Carolina, definitively show with very solid evidence that masks reduce the transmission of SARS-CoV-2. Masking is effective and does not cause people to breathe increased amounts of carbon dioxide or any other now debunked side effects that are being spread by misinformation in social media. Moving on to the subject of personal responsibility and freedom. This is not an issue of personal freedom, because your choice to wear a mask and get vaccinated directly affects my health and my family's health. I don't have a choice if you infect me with a potentially deadly virus or not as a result of your behavior. More importantly, my children, who cannot be vaccinated yet, have even less say. To put it another way, your right to swing your fist ends where my face begins. Mandates like this one being discussed are not something new, and have been around since the founding of this country, when George Washington himself mandated vaccines against smallpox for the Continental Army. If he hadn't, we might not be having this discussion right now. I will say this: if this executive order isn't obeyed, I hope that no child from Wayne will end up in intensive care. I hope with all my being that I won't have someone, possibly from in this room, crying on my shoulder to save their child when they are gravely sick with COVID in intensive care. Someone at the last meeting noted how many children have died of this disease, to which I wanted to pose this follow-up question. How many children dead is acceptable to you?
That's your time.
To me, one death is too many. To me, one death is too many.
I always feel short. All right. I'm a very practical person. I'm a very Plan B kind of person.
Ma'am, ma'am, your name, please.
Oh, sorry. Cindy Simon, Rutter Road. I'm a very practical person. I'm a very Plan B kind of person. The governor's not going to rescind his mandate. That's just the reality. So I do think it is the responsibility of the school board to at least address some of the concerns that it can address. And I wrote some of these down from the previous meeting. There was somebody who spoke about children being able to read. Of course, as a parent, I want my children to be able to read. As a taxpayer, I want my money to be spent well. As a person who's never seen a teacher's lips, because I was born almost totally blind, and there was many friends who were born totally blind, people can learn to read without seeing people's lips. Now, there are some students who do have specific disabilities where this is needed. So I hope the school district will be getting the masks that do have the see-through areas so that that students will be able to see those teachers' faces. But beyond that, you can learn to read even if you can't see people. I hear you on wanting your children to see the teacher's smiles. Again, I never saw a teacher smile. I don't see that well. But there are many other ways for teachers, parents, and everybody else to indicate joy, pleasure, positive response to something a child is doing. You don't only have to smile. I'm pretty sure our teachers know that. I'm pretty sure most of our teachers know how to do that. Finally, I understand the teachers wanting to see their students' faces. Now, truthfully, I've never been able to see any of my students' faces in my entire 25-year teaching career, but if one thing was made clear to me in professional developments last year when teachers are talking about teaching remotely and stuff, it's that they missed seeing their faces and they missed interacting. Here's the reality. You've got a much better chance of interacting with your students in the classroom, even if it's not necessarily seeing their faces, than you do remotely on Zoom when they're sitting there like this, but it's not really them, it's just a picture, et cetera. So please, keep our schools open, keep our schools safe, and do what you need to do to address the concerns related to mask-wearing in terms of learning. Thank you.
Sir, sir, the rule is that you can come back for a second bite after everyone has spoken once. Sorry. Thank you.
Hi, Mark Faber, Overlook Avenue. So I actually sat back and listened this time because I didn't want to talk first, and I wanted to listen to what everybody else had to say and really absorb all the different positions. And, you know, just some things popped out at me. So the first gentleman that spoke, Jim, he had mentioned how the vaccine levels at, across the children from 12, from 16 to 18 who are eligible are very low. My question to everybody would be, why do you think that is? Do you think the parents don't love their children? Do you think it's because they don't want their kids to be safe? The answer is no. It's because people don't trust the changing science. Before I came here, I had stacks of information, scientific backup of, you know, every single time the guidance has changed, every single time they changed the efficacy of the vaccine, every single time they had another reason why it wasn't going to be as effective as they originally thought. So the reason why I'm speaking against this mask mandate is because this is a principle thing. It goes to the next step. So we already see now that Hoboken implemented vaccine mandates. For me, that's the line. My kids will never go back to school where they are forced to get a vaccine. So if you think about that, and if you're worried about funding for disobeying the order of the governor, I know that I'm not alone. I know that there will be many parents where that is the line. So that will have a snowball effect because you'll lose funding because your schools aren't going to be full. That's going to cost teachers their jobs. It's going to cost administrators their jobs, and it's going to lead to the downward spiral that the other guy mentioned for disobeying the order. And that's where this whole thing becomes truly about freedom. You're sending the letter, and do I believe that there's a likelihood that he's going to rescind the order? No. But what he'll actually do is it will show that there's a line that people are going to push back on, and it will get it to stop. Because honestly, the science, as much as everybody shows science, you know, one guy talked about how effective masks are and water droplets. Well, have you ever had a fish tank? You run a filter for long enough, and yes, it catches particles, but it fills up. So eventually, it stops filtering. Same thing with a mask. You breathe into a mask all day, eventually, it's going to stop actually allowing you to breathe. It's just science. But actually, it's not really, it's more common sense than anything else. It's the same with everything else that we're talking about. There's, for every study that you're going to show me that shows that they're good, the other guy talked about the CO2 and how people had levels of CO2 that was seven times what's acceptable. I really don't know what that means. I'm not a scientist, but it really doesn't sound good. So that's the reason why we want you to do this. I can give you all this stuff and all this data and all the science, it's not going to change your minds. Sending a letter might help the future.
Good evening. Jennifer Lee in 48 Terrace Road. If we do this a little longer, it'll all go back to normal. Normal. What is normal anymore? As a longtime educator, normal was first-day high fives. Normal was holding the hand of an apprehensive student on the way into kindergarten class. Normal was circle time with little friends sitting next to one another. Normal was sharing art supplies and making a big fun mess with them. Normal was noisy cafeterias and children sharing stories and maybe even food with one another. Normal was big random hugs from a student that was happy to see me in hallway. Normal was closeness, it was community, it was sharing, it was discovery. Based on what we saw last week in the presentation and what our state is promoting, the new normal checks your temperature at the door. The new normal says, no more high fives, it's too dangerous. The new normal prioritizes sanitation over education. The new normal took the reading carpet away because being too close can make us sick. The new normal wants me to make sure your mask is pulled over your nose and mouth at all times, even though I see you behind that plastic cubicle. The new normal says, you can't share anything because we have to treat each other like we're already sick. The new normal wants you to sit in an isolation room if you have symptoms. The new normal does not care if you're uncomfortable or nervous or frustrated, because hey, it's safer this way. The new normal is insidiously chipping away at the foundation of what makes school a special place to be. And the sad part is that with each, with each passing month, a new mandate, a new protocol, a new mitigation technique, a new strategy comes along in the name of safety that we accept in the hopes of seeing good old normal again. But will we ever? If we continue down this path, what specific level of dystopian institution are we comfortable with making a school for our children? What level of disconnection to one another will it take for us to feel comfortable while being a supportive environment for children? The purpose of my message is to give pause before we continue to make decisions that will permanently alter education for years to come. This is why I have and will continue to voice my opinion that parents and children should have a right of choice and that the Wayne Board of Ed goes forth with writing a letter in support of choice when it comes to masking. And with what time I have left, I would like to revisit a plea that Mr. Duffy had brought to the public to get involved outside of town. I'm going to echo his sentiment and ask our community members to use their voices to make our local county and state representatives aware of our feelings as well. I realize that following legislation can be an arduous task, but it is important if we want to truly have a say in the matters that are here before they get to where we are tonight. In our social media forums, I see amazing discussions on both sides, and I wish that this energy would be used and directed at people in power like our governor instead of our neighbor whose mind is likely already made up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Dana Alloquin, Carroll Place. Good evening. I would like to thank the members of the board who stood up for their beliefs last week and backed parents who felt the same way, Mr. Duffy, Mr. Bubba, Mr. Giordano, and Mr. Pavlak. Watching that motion being suggested gave so many of us here and at home hope. I've decided I'm not going to talk about science tonight because I've sent you all countless emails linking studies, I've spoken about them in person, and for every study I show, others will cite one that challenges it. And I'm assuming that you have old on your research on both sides of the matter, because although it's clear that I stand for choice, I damn well have looked into both stances, because where there is risk, there must be choice. Tonight, I'm going to talk about politics, because let's be honest, I have finally realized that's exactly what's happening here. Some of you are playing politics with our kids. Some of you are using your political power to manipulate your fellow board members into having a change of heart. Some of you are worried that this letter, any stance that is different than King Murphy's, will tarnish your good name in his eyes. Well, let me remind you that this is the United States of America, and we welcome the difference of opinions. By not sending this letter for parental choice shows us you support force and dictatorship. To my knowledge, there are over 50 townships that have sent the same letter that we ask of you tonight. We aren't the first, and we aren't going to be the last. The last memory our children have at school is them being there unmasked. They have now lived all summer unmasked, gone to camp, hung out with their friends, gone on vacation, all while being unmasked. Now, how are we supposed to explain to them that after being free for months, they are being forced to return with their faces covered once again? All we are asking for is choice, the choice as a parent to decide what's best for the health and well-being of our children. And we are hoping that you will stand beside us to show that no matter the outcome, you heard our voices and you agreed with both sides, to mask or unmask, because that is what choice is.
Roger Gunnels, Lowy Ave.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Roger Gunnels, Lowy Ave.
Thank you.
I'm not here to ask, I'm not here to plead or demand. From the comments provided by the board, it's apparent that you have chosen your side. Just know that we, the people, have chosen ours. You wish to represent legislation that willfully and knowingly has no regard for our children or their future. Expectantly, but unfortunately, it's not the people or the children that you represent. It is a Democrat, liberal, anti-American machine that destroys everything it touches. Most importantly, we, the people, will not be complicit in the heinous crimes of racism and child abuse. Furthermore, the state, town, or board is mistaken in thinking that we, the people, will just roll over and cave to your apparent support for tyrannical takeover of the American family. We, the people, while we're at it, we, the people, are aware of the imminent attempt to remove the current requirement for parental consent for vaccines. To put things blunt, to put things bluntly, we will not comply. Everyone in this room better know, we will not comply. I didn't go to battle and fight and lose my brothers in arms so you guys could do this. It ain't going to happen. It ain't going to happen. It's that simple. We, the people, did not start this fight, but it got bladed our foot, our feet. But now we see it, but guaranteed, we'll see it through to the end. I thank God for those that service members who laid down their lives protecting my inalienable right to stand here today and tell you just how lousy you are at your job and representing the people in what's good and decent. As for our nation, our cities, and our towns, satisfying the less fabricated political agenda of equality has become the focal point of education. Sadly, many school boards, with the help of their respective states across the nation, have hijacked the academic parties of our children. Where is the value in exploiting race, religion, and political position, sexual orientation, of which is, which only further divides the people? Sadly, we are witnessing the blatant ignorance of schools and society at large as they place greater emphasis on race, sexual orientation, and political affiliation than any other elements that really matter, such as STEM, and effort and ability. The popular narrative now is one must assume that because someone's race, religion, and political affiliation or sexual orientation, that they must be great, and it couldn't be further from the truth. None of the scriptures above determine how well someone is at anything. It's all about heart and desire. So please stop pretending that because someone is a minority or a homosexual that they are exemplary in everything that they do and must be recognized as such, or you're racist. Many communities are watching in horror as school systems willfully and gleefully ignorantly make entire lessons devoted to explaining and promoting these personal attributes while there's, attributes as important as when, in fact, they're absolutely meaningless. While politicians are purposely fabricating this idea of DEI and asserting that everything is, asserting that everything contrary to their beliefs is racist, other countries such as China and Russia are actually focusing on actual education, taking full advantage of young, brilliant minds, that they will, they are outpacing us in education.
Tori Esposito, Woodlot Road. I wasn't going to get up here to quote scriptures, but since we're doing that, Proverbs 31, "Speak up for those who cannot speak for themselves, for the rights of all who are destitute. Speak up and judge fairly. Defend the rights of the poor and needy." Let me just clarify, it's choice, not mask or no mask. If you want to wear a mask, go ahead. If you don't want to wear a mask, go ahead. If you want to wear a hazmat suit, then go right ahead. I stand here tonight, and you guys have a choice. Masked? Not masked. Mr. Duffy has the choice to not wear a mask. Thank you. Okay. Still in a pandemic, but we can have 30,000 people on the beach in Atlantic City jamming out to fish. We can have 80,000 people in MetLife Stadium watching the Jets and the Giants. And we're still in a pandemic, but my kids have been at summer camp all summer, playing sports, playing on the playground. You have a, and everybody's right here, the EO is more about principle, right? It's, today it's masks, and it's going to be vaccine. And you have a bully in Trenton who's going to sue school districts if they don't follow it. I can tell you now, I will sue everybody, including the town, if they think my kids are going to get poked with a needle. Okay? My body, my choice. What happened to that party?
Cutting into his time.
We have a bully who flies to a country by choice that's high, that is on the high-risk CDC, Center for Disease Control, transmission list to go to his $10 million villa, but your kid has no choice whether or not to wear a mask. Last week, COVID numbers in schools was 25. I wonder why that is. Oh, fall sports are starting. Kids are not getting COVID in school. They're still doing activities. We are in a pandemic, yet people are living their normal lives. You want change? Vote the guy out on November 2nd and get some change. That's the only way it's going to start.
Good evening. I'm from Clifton. Am I allowed to speak?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Maria Kovalevsky, and I live in Clifton. This is a very impromptu speech. I was just motivated. I don't know if anyone is looking at the bigger picture of what's going on here and in the world today. Who knows what is ideological subversion? Does anybody know what that is? It's also, what is ideological subversion? It's also known as psychological warfare. Ideological subversion means to change the complete perception of reality. There are four steps to this. Here are the steps that have come to pass. The first one is demoralization. Demoralization takes 15 to 20 years, and we're 30 years past this mark. He, she, they, them, teaching youngsters about sex, same-sex, states trying to legalize prostitution, and yet individuals that end up in prostitution come from child human trafficking. Okay? Second, destabilization. Destabilization takes two to five years, financially, economically, and this has come to pass as well. Third one, crisis, crisis, crisis. Crisis takes only six weeks, six weeks, and look what's happened. Look what's happened. Step four is normalization. Normalization is taking children away from their parents to vax them. 24,000 in Australia, normalizing children wearing masks until they are incapacitated, as your words from last week. Do you want to see your children incapacitated on the floor for them to take the mask finally off of their face? Are you comfortable with that? Are you comfortable with that?
Ma'am, ma'am, address the chair.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Incapacitated. Normalizing getting brownie points at restaurants for being vaxxed. What is that? What really is that? There's proof masks don't work. The vaccine has gone from 95 to 38% efficacy since March because millions have gotten it now. It doesn't prevent, you still transmit. The proof of the long-lasting injuries is astounding, and yet the top virologists, immunologists, biologists have constantly been silenced. The repercussions of this decision will be on your hands and everyone's hands making this decision. Mask mandates are completely unethical, completely. And if not completely lifted, it should at least be optional. It's a freedom of choice, freedom of choice. My, my family escaped from a communist country to come here for this freedom, and I cannot believe this is happening. It's appalling. It really is appalling. You guys got to really wake up to what's really, really going to happen. It's not good if this doesn't change. Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Battershell, and I live at 63 Camillo Drive. Some people in town know me as the Angel Mom. I am on YouTube at Angels and Souls. I am a clairvoyant and an author, and I've been telling my viewers for ages now that we are in a battle between dark and light, and this darkness is after our most vulnerable, our children, young, pliable minds ripe for the picking. And as a parent, I'll do whatever it takes to protect my children, especially against unwanted medical advice. Our family is a firm believer in natural healing, yet no one talks about this. Instead, mask up and vax up is ridiculous. Zinc, vitamin C are bad words now, and it's such a shame. As a mom, I'm going to do whatever it takes to protect my kids and find this situation incredibly sad. As a parent, we feel that we are losing our rights to raise our children the way that we want to, and we will not stand for this because this is the United States and we abide by the Constitution, and it's really getting to a point now where enough's enough. Did you know that masking is a form of submission? Eyes Wide Shut is just a movie, they say. Epstein, Hollywood is diseased. Luckily, my kids have me as a mom and are schooled on who the enemy is, and it's not about political sides. We are all expendable chess pieces in a much bigger game, and the clock is ticking. Thank you.
My name's Deb. I'm on Alps Road in Wayne, New Jersey.
I'm sorry, ma'am, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I had a whole spiel outlining my position on masks, but really, it would be redundant. For many meetings, you've heard loudly from those who resist masking, but I do think you're starting to hear many more voices in opposition to that view. Voices who are not comfortable entering this chamber under these circumstances, who have emailed you, who have given proxy to someone who would attend. Tonight's matter at hand is the proposed letter to Governor Murphy. I, for one, do not think the concerns accurately reflect the majority of our citizens, and thus, it should not be sent. While the semantics are clear that you identify a specific slice of our population, in its entirety, and the mere fact of sending could be interpreted as a reflection on this whole town, is sending this letter, which will likely have no impact on the mandate, really a prudent course of action solely to mollify the squeaky wheel? What's next? Actually considering defying the governor's order? What a horrible position for Dr. Toback to be in. How would he manage under a mask-optional scenario? Would we have buildings dedicated to mask wearers and other buildings for mask-free? Something as extreme as this would have to be considered because the value of mask-wearing only works if everyone does so. Please end the debate now, vote down this resolution, and move on to other pressing considerations facing the district as we look to safely open the schools. Thank you.
Julia Dardia, 87 Poplar. My kids are picky eaters. One of the few things I can get them to eat are peanut butter and Nutella, but I'm not allowed to send them to school with it for snacks since there is a district policy that requires our classrooms to be nut-free. Anaphylaxis results in the death of an average of 1,500 Americans per year. It's a sad but very rare outcome. Despite how rare it is, our district has a policy restricting other students' freedom of snack choice in order to prevent a rare outcome for a small group of students. Can you imagine telling a food allergy family that they could take their chances in the classroom because you won't restrict the food freedoms of others just to protect their child from the rare chance that they could die? The fact is, you created this policy to make allergy kids safer. Key word here is "safer." My kid can still eat their peanut butter in the cafeteria, just not at the same table as their allergic peers. This creates an environment where allergy kids aren't 100% safe, but they are safer. Wearing a helmet doesn't guarantee our kids won't get a concussion, but it makes them safer. Installing a safety vestibule at every school doesn't guarantee a bad guy won't get in, but it makes our buildings safer. Rigorously inspecting our buses, hiring responsible drivers, and making kids wear seat belts doesn't guarantee a safe trip, but it makes the trip safer. Does the public always agree that these measures are necessary? No. What happened when you ran a safety and security referendum on the ballot that would have secured state funding for those expensive security vestibules? It was voted down. Yet somehow, your job is to hear the public and do the right thing regardless. You built the safety vestibules anyway. Why? Because it makes the kids safer. Masks are not here forever. Masks are also not going to guarantee our children's safety. But if my kid, wearing a mask, can keep their peers and our employees safer and increase the chances of keeping school buildings open, I'm all for it. You know what's more uncomfortable than a mask? Sitting a seven-year-old in front of a computer screen for virtual school, watching her struggle to learn how to read, and listening to her beg for her teacher and friends in real school. Do you know what else is less safe than a nine-year-old running around in gym class with his face covered by a mask and hot? That same nine-year-old sitting home, lonely, depressed, and isolated because our school building is closed again due to an outbreak. According to a poll conducted recently, 67% of New Jersey residents approve of masking schoolchildren. When I last looked at the opposingchange.org petitions created for Wayne residents, the rate was similar, at 62% of respondents being in favor of masks. Given the fact that this board did not see fit to poll their community before drafting a letter calling the opposing subsides substantial, I'd call the results of these petitions eye-opening. Your personal opinions on masks do not belong here. You are ethically and legally required to protect every child in your care and do everything in your power to make them safer.
My name is Brittany Corral. I live at 36 Lawrence Road. I just wanted to bring up an article that came out in the news this week. Many of you may be familiar with this publication. It's called The New Yorker. I'm sure it's something that would be approved by many of the people on the left side of the room. This article brought into question whether masks are really as effective as we think they are. The head of Emergency Medicine Infectious Disease Management at Boston Medical Center, a doctor named Alyssa Schechter Perkins, said a year ago, "I said, 'Masks are not the end of the world, why not just wear a mask?'" But a year later, she said, "The world has changed. There are real downsides to masking children for this long with no known end date and without any clear upside." This is again, from the head of infectious disease management at Boston Medical Center. "I am not aware of any studies that show conclusively that kids wearing masks in schools has any effect on their own morbidity or mortality, or on the hospitalization or death rate in the community around them." I think a misperception, and again, that was not my thoughts or my words, this is the quote from the head of infectious disease at a hospital in Boston. I think a misperception here, and in this entire room, is that the people that are asking for mask choice don't love or care about their children or other children. On the contrary, we love and care about our children just as much as everyone here, everybody. We are not cruel, we're not unloving or uncaring, but we care about their freedom and their ability to breathe. I just came off a 13-hour shift where I wore a mask for 13 hours, and guess what? Every single chance I got, I tried to take my mask down when I could, because guess what? It was really hard to breathe when I was talking to my patients. I was winded, I was gassed. Before my maternity leave started, when I was pregnant wearing it, I could not breathe. I had to stop multiple times when I was giving discharge instructions to patients to pull my mask down and take a breath outside of the room. It was difficult, and guess what? It's hard for the kids too. So the parents that are here fighting for no masks are not doing so because they're unloving, but because they think it's the best thing for their children. They are not trying to say that you can't put your child in a mask. That is fine. They are happy to let you do that. But we are all just asking for the same privilege to be granted. I'd just like to bring up something else in that article. The quote continues to say, "This question of relevant science is what makes the Georgia study worth going over careful consideration," over and over. "Studies and reports on children in schools with low transmission rates claim in their summaries that masking students helped keep transmission down, but looking at the underlying data in these studies, masks were always required or widely worn and implemented in concert with a variety of other interventions such as increased ventilation. Without a comparison group that didn't require student masking, it's difficult or impossible to isolate the effects of masks." Now, one more thing I'd like to bring up. An article that came out today says the UK drops mask mandates for schools. Do people in England not care about their children? In Northern Ireland, they never, ever required masks at the height of the pandemic for kids 13 and under.
If anyone else wants to speak, please get in the queue because we're stopping after the gentleman at the end of the line.
Nicholas Petty, 26 Bullens Ave. I first want to start with, I think that we're losing the concept of freedoms and everyone's rights. I don't want to wear a mask. I have not worn a mask, period. I've gone in every store. If you don't want my business, I walk out, not a problem. But I will not wear a mask, and I will not be told to wear a mask. The other side is requiring that I have to do what they want me to do. I'm not requiring what I want to do on them. That's the difference between the sides, whether it be vaxing, masks, or any other issue, religion, it doesn't matter. Now, you guys, when you get elected, you take an oath of office, correct? That oath of office is to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the will of the people, which is us. We are at the top. Above that is our Creator. Below us is the state government, and below that is federal. And we, as the people, are considered the boss. And the governor makes an order, and order is not law and will never be law. I do not follow orders, I do not follow mandates, I do not follow requirements. I follow law. I'm a free citizen, and I will walk into that school on the first day with my kids unmasked, so yous all know, and then we will have a legal battle. Because we pay for that as citizens, and I'm not going to be required to do something against my will. And the other thing with the vaccinations, my kids are not vaccinated, period, since birth, and on record is a medical exemption for both of them. And God help me, if you vax my kid, what kind of a problem you're going to have. And like the one gentleman said, "I will not comply. I am a free man, and I do not take orders from tyrannous governments." Thank you.
Nancy Shogar, Vans Lane. I wasn't planning on speaking, but it was too fun to kick that guy one more space back. Not that guy.
I'm sorry.
That guy said most of what I wanted to say. This will be a little off the cuff. God is our Creator. We are a nation of laws, and you people as board members are in a higher position than us in the audience because you have been elected to your position, much like a mayor or a governor. And when you have a tyrant in one of those positions, there's a doctrine known as the doctrine of the lesser magistrates. I wish people would look it up. And I wish the pastor who is here, who likes to speak, knew about it, because I doubt he does. The doctrine of the lesser magistrates basically states, and it's biblical and it's historic, it's been utilized for years, I'm just learning about it myself, so I'm a little rusty on it, but essentially, it's about interposition. And what that means is, we, the people, elect you. We elect councilmen, we elect legislators to be in our stead, to make laws on our behalf. But when someone above you, in your station, becomes a tyrant, it is your duty to stand between them and the citizen. It's the doctrine of what the lesser magistrate, which would be you, is obligated to do. You have a duty to do that. So in addition to putting forth this resolution to write the letter, to send to the governor, however the Mecca Nation is for that, you should also be sending that letter to the state school board, you should be engaging your other school boards. I saw some people were here from Clifton, and I heard that 50 other towns or so are doing this. You should join together because this is how you represent the people who put you in the seats where you are. One other thing I would say, just when this whole craziness started, besides we all, those of us who know what's going on, know it's part of a communist takedown of America, so I'll just leave it there because I'll get a tinfoil hat accusation. But if you were watching a lot of the advertising, it was just everywhere, on the radio, the Ford dealer would come on with the car commercial, "Oh, we're in this together." Shoprite Circular would say, you know, "It's community, community." Every time I see one of these words about community, and "do it for us," and "do it for your neighbors," and "we're all in this together," pastor, that's collective salvation. Collective salvation is different from individual salvation. Look those up. Individual salvation is biblical. Collective salvation is not biblical. Additionally, I would say, for those of you who have been talking about vaccines tonight, there are no vaccines. Okay? For this virus, so-called virus, nothing is a vaccine. Okay? They are gene therapies. Supposedly Pfizer got some kind of approval. It's not even for the one that people have been given. PCR tests are garbage. Look up PCR tests. See about the cycling. I'm not a scientist, I don't understand the science. Thank you.
My name is Julia Barton, and I am the...
I can't hear the speaker, ma'am.
I'm the pastor at Pakenak Community Church, and I have, my oldest is going into second grade, and I have two younger ones who will be coming through the school system soon. I speak today as a parent. There's been a lot of information shared, and I appreciate everything that has been shared, and I appreciate the space where opinions from across the board can be shared. I've been speaking to my kids a lot about this, and my oldest, today, when she found out that I was coming to this meeting, she asked what it was about, and I shared a little bit that, you know, parents and educators and leaders in our community don't all agree about masks, and we're trying to come together to find a solution. And she shared that she absolutely hates her mask. She does not want to wear it, but she then continued, "But I understand why it's important for me to do so." And she said that if I can, you know, keep even just one of my classmates safe, then I will wear this thing that I hate. I asked her about her experience this last year. We're new to this community, and I asked her how it was in school wearing her mask. She said it wasn't fun, especially on the hot days, but that her teacher gave plenty of opportunity for mask breaks. If there was ever a student who was struggling or overheating, she noticed that they were able to take a break and breathe. They had many times where they were outside and they could play together. She felt loved. She is sad to leave her teacher that she had. She has made best friends, and yes, this is not ideal, but I agree that if there is anything that we can do to keep our children safe, that we should do it. And by wearing masks, that's one more line of defense against this incredible disease that we're all wishing would go away. So I wish that we would not send the letter. I am not in agreement with that, and I'd like to make that my opinion known to the board. Thank you.
My name is Mimi Hannon, 39, Ellicott Lane.
I didn't hear you.
My name is Mimi Hannon. I'm from 39 Ellicott Lane. First, I'd like to say that I believe the masks should be optional. I don't think they should be mandated. I believe, like in restaurants, you can walk into a restaurant and you can take it off when you're seated. Maybe if it pleases the masses, that's something we can do and say, when you're walking in the hallways, wear a mask, or if you're going to the bathroom, wear a mask. But when you're seated at your desk, you shouldn't have to wear a mask. I mean, I just don't see the need for it. You know, just like, you know, looking at you, Kathy, you have no mask, but you have a thing in front of you, you have no mask, but you have nothing in front of you. It's freedom of choice. I mean, that's your choice to do that, and that's your choice to put... I mean, that's your choice to do that, and that's your choice to put up a shield if you feel that it's necessary. The other thing is, why are our schools not better prepared? Why is there no air conditioning in each class? I pay a boatload of money in taxes. Mr. Toback, Dr. Toback, you sent out an email saying that schools just had updates done to them. You said how kindergarten is full day now. Why not, if we're in a pandemic, have waited to do the kindergarten thing and use that money towards air conditioning? We're in a pandemic, remember? I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to me that that money would be used for something that could have waited one more year. I just don't see the need. My son is going into seventh grade. He has ADHD. He has sensory issues. To have him masked up all day is really unfair. It's really almost child abuse. This kid suffers with this thing on his face all day while he's sweating and sweltering in classrooms. What is being done to take care of that? I ask you, I beg you, please send the letter to Murphy. Please send that letter. Thank you.
I live on 7 Seminole Ave, and I think masks should be optional, especially since there's no air conditionings in the school. And in the 90-degree weather, it makes it extremely hard to breathe. Even when it's not hot, it's extremely hard to breathe. Also, I have sports-induced asthma, which makes it two times harder on me, especially in gym class when we're standing outside, and they want us to wear masks, even if we're just running around or walking on the track. So I think they should be an optional thing to do. Thank you.
Back in the '60s, I...
Sir, name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Gabriel A. Naziole, 1260 Ratsar Road in Wayne. Back in the '60s, I was required to attend a class in the insurance business regarding communication, and the lady psychologist that ran the course said, "If you want to effectively communicate with anybody, you should try to establish a familiar frame of reference first." To that end, I would indicate to you that I had served for nine years as a member of Board of Education, the last two as president, in the township of Belleville. I mention that only because I want you to understand that I do appreciate this box that you find yourself in. You see that I have a mask. I'm an 84-year-old guy. I'm a little bit scared. I don't want to take a chance, you know? I could be, instead of vertical, I could be horizontal. So I don't know what the right answer is, but I do know that from reading the newspaper every day, anybody, Jesus could get confused with what the newspapers report. And I think that the most damaging word to the subject matter is the word mandate. When you say mandate, you just put the hair up on the back of everyone's neck, and it could have simply been said as a requirement. And yes, it has been made a totally political issue, and aside from the fact that someone has said that you're not supposed to be political, well, if I remember correctly, for three different times, I ran a political campaign to get elected. So, I mean, it's a joke. It's also unfortunate that there are people that come here and try to use this audience in such a serious matter as an opportunity to politicize. That's a shame. In any event, I don't know what's right, but I'm going to wear a mask because I'm scared. Now, I have two of my three children who are schoolteachers, both retired. One has a doctorate in math pedagogy, and she's vaccinated, and she's scared to hell she wears a mask. My other son is just, I won't do it. I can't talk to him. I can't change his mind. I have noticed that I probably sat on the wrong side of the room here, because the people with the mask are over there, and the people without the mask are over here. So I don't want to offend anybody. The thing is, I would not want to be a member of the Board of Education having to decide this issue. Thank you.
My name is Wendy. I live at 8 Rose Terrace in Wayne. First of all, I just want to thank all of you. I know this is a very, very difficult situation, and I am once again going to ask the board to present a letter to the governor on behalf of the families in Wayne that would request optional masks. I am asking you to represent those families, and I really have to say once again, if everybody believes that vaccinated people are safe, and they're wearing masks, and that people who are unvaccinated are dangerous, just keep wearing your mask. Keep getting vaccinated. This has become a back-and-forth kind of issue. I think we all really love our kids. I think we really, really want the best for them. But at this point, present the letter to the governor. He needs to know that we have a say as well, and I thank you for that.
Hello again. I'd like to talk a little bit about the crowd's consensus. During the last public portion, it was suggested that in order for Wayne schools to achieve a higher statewide ranking, the board should listen to the majority of the town to do so. Statewide rankings usually go off of standardized testing for core subjects, AP class participation in success, graduation rate, and student-to-teacher ratio, and along with similar metrics. Public K-12 education, composed of what should be taught, how it should be taught, and of course, administration, which includes budgeting and how to hire good teachers, empower them to be great within the given constraints. Doing any of these competently for any subject requires extraordinary expertise and experience. We are talking about years of training, research, practice, reflection, and collaboration. But instead of qualified experts calling the shots to make these decisions from what a township minority or even majority wants, the arrogance and ignorance required to think that a crowd's consensus is superior to those who have dedicated years and years to education is alarming. There are some fields like art, sports, or religion, where everyone thinks that they are an expert, and guess what? It's fine, because thinking you're an expert in these fields when you're not poses a low risk. However, there are fields where even the smallest mistakes can have very high risks. Science, engineering, medicine, education, parenting, public health, IT, law, industrial safety. You would not follow a crowd's consensus to perform a surgery, build a bridge, develop software, et cetera. What is the goal of a public education system? It's not private, so the goal isn't to get the owners rich, as is typical in private enterprise, and, you know, often it should be. The goal is to ensure that every student has access to the resources and help that they need, so that the student may maximize their learning and achieve their potential. For every student to achieve their own highest potential, that's an equality of outcome. That's a good kind of equity. There's no doubt that many members of the public have their heart in the right place. However, if we are able to get results, we must focus on the process. It's far too easy to meddle with a complex system that works and break it. The lowest common denominator, public favorite, hot dog, curriculum, and teaching methods are not going to cut it. They're going to be dangerous. In summary, I support that the Wayne Board of Ed and the public do their best to obtain an expert level of understanding. And when not practical, look to the experts for guidance. So long as those experts hold no financial conflict of interest, their suggestions are our best option to inform the improvement of our education system. When applicable, the board should also observe successful methods and procedures employed by other districts to inform educational improvements. We are counting on you.
Madam President, if I could, just before the next speaker, make a motion to, since we've had this gentleman set up there, be the last speaker at the podium.
Are you making a motion to close public portion, sir?
After this final speaker here, yes. We're seeing that there's two, after the second gentleman, yes.
Second? You're making a motion?
There's, excuse me, there's two people online, and sir, you had two bites of the apple. You're done. Seeing that there's two people standing in line after these two people, I'd make the motion to close public portion.
Second? Who's the second? Well, they don't get to second. Who's the second? Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bubba. Roll call, Mr. Moffitt, and public portion after the gentleman in the blue shirt.
You're last.
See how motions work, people.
Mrs. Kumar?
To be voted on.
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Mrs. Putup?
Yes.
Mrs. Albanese?
Seeing no one else rising to speak, yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Brittany Corrigan. I'm reading this letter on behalf of Louisa Wilshy, who can't be here. Here we are, divided by actors believing they are working for the common good by imposing mandates. When did the words mandate and common good have a favorable result? The goal of government that controls you is to divide, and it has worked. Even the media has jumped to grasp at any straw of drama they can possibly find to keep our Wayne competition going and further our divide. Who would have known we would have to have a civil war in Wayne to get on the news? Why is this happening? Because we live for drama and fear. Fear is blinding. From a neurofunctioning standpoint, fear inhibits the prefrontal brain from working. Do you know what the optimal function of the prefrontal brain is? It controls judgment, decision-making skills, impulse, and common sense. No wonder why everyone who is guided by fear has lost all common sense. You still believe a piece of cloth will protect you from a virus because it stops droplets, even though the box it comes in clearly states, "This does not protect you from COVID-19." You still believe you are educated by watching CNN or any news that tells you that cloth masks that state they don't work are part of the solution. You still believe children are going to die from a pandemic when the survival rate is over 99% and children are the least effective. You still believe children are super-spreaders when there is zero evidence of this. You still believe that kids can go with their parents to Phish concerts, unvaccinated, and New York City concerts, unvaccinated, with thousands unmasked and on top of strangers, but yet they will only get COVID in school? You still believe kids are at a greater risk of dying from COVID versus any other illness or accident? Meanwhile, more kids died from the flu in one season versus this entire pandemic. That's a fact. But will you continue to ignore it? You still don't believe masks don't harm children because Murphy tells you a mask won't kill them? I didn't realize we need to show death as a reason for not masking. Wow, so all the other harmful effects from masking mean nothing to you? The oxygen deprivation, which leads to anxiety, confusion, weakness, tiredness, loss of focus, inability to cognitively function, passing out, moodiness, loss of control, anger, not to mention the numerous psychological and developmental inhibitions due to mask use. They all mean nothing? You still believe masks do no real harm? Slow torture of our children via masks is real. You still believe it's healthy to eat McDonald's all day, be overweight, and high risk for infection, but a mask is going to be your saving grace of protection instead of putting down the donuts and getting on a treadmill to strengthen the immune system? How about we mandate health? How about we mandate organic food, healthy eating and exercise? You really want to see numbers drop? Maybe we can help the unhealthy Americans get healthy. Please stop the madness of these irrational beliefs. Please put away, please put the fear away so all prefrontal common sense is used once again. When will the government overreach be enough for you to stand up for us? When our children are passing out from the masks? That's already happened. Or will you tell us, "Oh, well, at least they aren't dying"? Please stop torturing our children for the sake of your political careers. You shouldn't think what Murphy thinks of you, and you should care more what we think of you. We aren't rioting. We aren't burning buildings. We are using our freedom of speech to ask you to stand up for us. Send the letter as others have. Kristin Carrato and our Republican leaders are supporting us publicly. We're not afraid of King Murphy.
When you get my age, things like being an OCD just can't get away. I know you changed to a three-minute limit on speakers not too long back, but you ought to tell the person that prepares this that on page two, it still says comments may be limited to five minutes a person.
I noticed the error.
Just one other comment. Having sat where you sit for some nine years, on page two, item G is open to the public on agenda items and general comments. When I was on the board, the response by members of the board wasn't down by Q under old business. What that does when you do something like that, it tells the public that you're aware that it diminishes the impact of what someone says. If any number of minutes or hours go by between the time somebody made the comment and the time that board members get the opportunity under item Q from something that came up on item G to respond, either give an answer to a question or to give an opposing opinion. I just wanted to comment that if you want to be effective, and you want these people to trust you and believe in you, give the answers when the questions are asked. Thank you.
Okay, so, onto the agenda. We already made the motion. I assume we don't have to make another motion to close public. Mr. Moffitt?
I do not think so. I think you're good.
Mr. Gepper?
Yep.
You're okay with that? Okay. I'm going to make sure. All righty. We have two items. Can I get them over?
I'll move.
Second.
Mr. Duffy and Mr. Pavlak, discussion.
Yeah, I have a question on O1. It says, "Undersigned members." Does that mean only the members that vote yes on O1 need to sign? I don't know who would answer that question.
Did you hear the question, Mr. Gepper?
Yes, that's why the letter is written, to indicate the undersigned members of the Wayne Township Board of Education. So those would be the ones that would sign.
So only the members that voted yes, or all members?
Any member who votes yes could sign it.
Okay, so if a member voted no, they would not have to sign?
Yes, that's true.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any other discussion?
I have, Mrs. Kazan.
Mr. Bubba.
I actually would like one thing added to the resolution, if it was okay with the rest of the board members, because there's been a misconception about this whole thing. As Mr. Duffy said, we are going to abide by the law, because that's what we have to. Our oath is to the state of New Jersey, along with the Constitution. And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Duffy, you did say that, that we would absolutely follow the law. We would send the letter, but we would definitely follow the law if that's what it is. So what I would like added to this is that we will follow the law, that we are supporting, if we're supporting the letter, yes, but that we will also follow the law when it comes to whatever the governor tells us, because that is something we don't have a choice in.
Okay, Mr., oh, I'm sorry, you finished?
That's all I'm looking for.
I just want you to make a specific motion with specific language, so that we can get it on the record that way, and the letter can be changed after a vote. Well, make the motion, then we'll see if you have a second.
Okay, so I'm making a motion that we add that, no matter what the governor's decision, that we are going to abide by it, because that is what our oath was.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second. I second.
Roll call on the amendment. Mr. Moffitt?
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy? Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Mrs. Putup?
Abstain.
Mrs. Albanese?
Abstain.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Has it carried?
One, two, three, has five votes. It would carry without, with, uh, without, with or without your vote.
I, so it carried? Okay.
At this stage, without your vote, cast?
It carries.
If you're casting your vote as yes?
I asked if it carried so far.
It has one, two, three, four, five votes, which make it affirmative vote with or without your vote, but I'm calling for your vote.
I understand.
For record.
I'll abstain.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Through the chair, if I may, just a point of clarification.
Well, now we're back to the, we're back to the motion on the floor, which are the two agenda items, and is there any further discussion?
Yes, just a point of clarification through our counsel here, through Ms. Kumar's question, is, are we voting on this and signing our names whether this passes or not? Because then what's the point of having a vote? They're just the board members that will, that are willing to sign it will sign it, and the board members that are not willing to sign it won't sign it, and the letter will be sent one way or the other. So what is the, what is the point of actually having a vote?
Well, the way the letter is written is that the undersigned members of the Wayne Township Board of Education. So certainly any member who votes in favor of it can sign it, but not all the members have to.
But will that be, the letter be sent if there's only two board members or one board member that will sign it?
No, I was gonna say.
That's just a point of clarification.
You're gonna need five votes to pass the letter.
That's all I was asking.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
First of all, I, I'm not sitting here saying I'm defying the governor. All right? I, I've been a public servant for over 35 years. I've never disregarded a lawful order and will not and never will. All right? I am supporting this to express my opinion of what I feel. And yes, I, if he tells me, if the state says I have to do it, I have to do it. But I'm just expressing, you know, the opinion, my opinion, as well as the opinion of the constituents.
Any further discussion on the agenda items?
Mr. Giordano.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I have a face. Not a good-looking one, but I definitely have a face. I'm also taking the time to set my stopwatch for three minutes. Since you're given three minutes, I should limit myself to three minutes also. So, I've had the honor of serving as a trustee for the Board of Education for two and a half years. It's my pleasure working to help to serve the needs of our children and the citizens of this, this district during this time. I've seen many different and valued opinions aired out during this time. With the COVID-19 pandemic stretching across the globe, it has not left us unscathed. I don't speak about the illness itself, although the loss we have incurred are not insignificant, but that the damage is done to our collective mental well-being. Whether you favor open schools, keep them virtual, cohorts, no cohorts, masks, no masks, poor ventilation, good ventilation, curriculum change, no curriculum change, mascot change, no mascot change, inoculations, no inoculations, the fight never seems to end. We're capable to show our love for democracy with each and every point and counterpoint, and I believe that. Not only discuss this with our minds by utilizing facts, but with anecdotal evidence to show our hearts. There's no one side that's correct in this. There is no one solution to this unbelievably difficult situation. But I believe the answer lies somewhere in the middle. We have to come up with compromises that benefit all. We have sought guidance from people who impose solutions on us, and we are left wanting for more. Mandates are handed out, and we are left to interpret them to an extent. There have been times when we had, when I have sided with one side or another on many issues. I just wish to state that my, I may disagree with someone's point of view. I do not in any way think it, think of them less and still want to call them a friend. We have a respect, we have to respect one of those points in these situations. Shouting down someone whose opinions does not match yours is wrong, as those who do not include people in their circle because they differ and then call themselves an inclusion group. I am not here to pontificate the morality of our choices. Some colorful emails have been sent to me over the time I've been in this office, but the recent ones were very strong. To ask the governor to consider making a mask an option is nothing more than me performing my duties as a representative of this town. My opinion on this doesn't really matter. I truly don't think I'm going to burn in hell for what I've done. I do not think that the blood of our children will be on my hands, and as a practicing Catholic, the sins I've done in the past will more than likely take out me instead of this letter going to the governor. I still respect you and your side and your opinion. I agree with much of both are saying, but not 100% of it. I don't agree with any side 100%. But I ask all that he could, they consider all the people involved with very different opinions on the issue to show each other respect. There are dangers in allowing this issue to become too one-sided, and this is not only unhealthy but un-American. As I stated before, the best solution to an unwinnable solution for one side is to push it towards the middle. One of the reasons why I stand where I stand, and I do not push one side to the other, but make sure that both sides are being heard in this one. In closing, my father said to me one day, a few weeks ago, legislate like you're gonna get voted out tomorrow. And that's what I plan on doing right now. I'm gonna legislate like I'm voted out tomorrow. One side wants to be represented. I'm gonna represent them, not because I agree with them, not because I think it's right, but they deserve the dignity and respect just as the other side. Right now, the other side's got everything they want. They've got a mandate. They're gonna get an inoculation mandate. So I think the true answer is somewhere in the middle here, and we really have to all come together, but it has to start with respecting each other's opinions. Thank you.
Mrs. Kazan, I have a question. Are we voting on both items at once, or are we? Okay.
Yes. Um. So. Yes, it was. Who moved the agenda, Mr. Moffitt? It's been a while, I know.
I have, I have a motion by Mr. Duffy, and seconded by Mr. Bubba on ending the, the votes, on ending the second portion. We have discussion of both A and I have Mr. Duffy, I thought, had made the, for both. All right, so, Mrs., Mrs. So, Mrs. Kazan, I move the first one. That'll help.
Yeah, you want to move one item?
I'll move the first item, yes, and then we'll go to the second.
I'll second.
We're gonna be voting on your standing, so first item, which is what?
So the first item only, which is?
I think we should move the letter.
M1. That's the one. Right, that is the one, I thought. You want to use M1? Uh, it's a second, I'm sorry.
Okay, so you're gonna move O.
I'm gonna move O, and then we'll go back and I'll move, together.
We're moving the letter.
So I have, is, so am I recording it, Mr. Duffy with O?
Moving, Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Who's seconding it?
I'll second for letter O.
Thank you, that's what we're moving.
Right, Mr. Duffy. Right. Who's, so Mr. Bubba seconded.
When Mr. Bubba made the motion, Mr. Duffy made the second on the letter to the governor with noted amendments.
I had Mr. Correct. Well, the amended section, I have Mr. Bubba making the amendment, seconded by Mr. Giordano on the amending resolution. Right, then we voted on that, correct?
Yes.
Right. So it's amended. So now it's O as amended, and that's motion by Mr., Mr. Bubba, and seconded by Mr. Duffy. Okay, shall I call roll?
Yes, please.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Mrs. Putup?
Abstain.
Mrs. Albanese?
I'm sorry that I didn't get to speak at the last meeting, so I'm going to talk for a minute about my vote. The overarching responsibility of a board member is to provide for the health, safety, and security of students and staff. This year, we have an additional goal, which is to provide as much in-person student-to-teacher contact as is possible, because we all know that that's a far superior situation for students to be in than to be bouncing back and forth between whether they're quarantining or they're isolating, or teachers or students are testing positive. So our second goal this year is to keep students in school as much as possible. We have a speaker tonight who was very eloquent in talking about what will that new normal be? How do we get to normal? And I agree with a lot of the points that you made. Normal is students in school. We have to use every tool in the toolbox, and we have to give the administration every possible tool to keep students and staff safe, healthy, secure, and in school, because that's where we know students learn, students progress, and students do their best every day. So I am not gonna support the letter to the governor, because I honestly believe at this point, our best option to keep students in school learning is to do anything and everything that we can to protect them and the staff in school. So my vote to the letter is no.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
I would also, I, Ms. Albanese, you pretty much echoed half of the things I was going to say, so I don't want to say anything more than I agree. We need to keep the students in school as much as possible, and I feel like this is the best way for us to do so, and that's actually based upon the American Academy of Pediatrics recommendations. Members of the Board of Education are not trained in public health, and as board members, it's our role to listen to public health experts and organizations to create a safe environment for our students. So I'm going to vote no.
Mrs. Kazan?
I, I think I've already made my position clear on this, so I'm still a no. I won't make a speech about it.
Motion does not carry. Motion does not carry.
Thank you. Okay, we have another agenda item. Can I get a mover?
I'll move.
Mrs. Putup?
I'll second.
Mrs. Putup, Mr. Bubba.
Shall I call roll?
We'll do roll call when it quiets down.
Yes, ma'am.
We're trying to vote here. We're still having a meeting. We're still having a meeting, and we need to vote. Mr. Moffitt, roll call, please.
Mr. Giordano?
This pertains to the legal counsel. I will abstain.
I can't hear you. I can't hear anybody.
I do not hear you, sir.
What did you say, Mr. Giordano?
We didn't make a decision on it.
Yes, we did.
Oh, we did?
Oh, my God, is everyone confused?
Let's let this carry out. Let's allow this.
Okay, let me, let me, ma'am, ma'am, we're, the public portion is over. We're voting on something right now. Okay.
Did you vote no to sending a letter to the governor?
That motion did not carry. That's correct.
I'm sorry, it, it.
With eight board members.
We're having a roll call.
Yeah, with eight board members voting, it would require five votes to pass.
Correct.
So as the business administrator said, it did not pass.
The majority would be five. We don't have five.
We need five votes.
Okay, come on, that's it. Now, you're interrupting our meeting. This, the public portion is over. You have your point of clarity. Mr. Moffitt?
I'm sorry, I made a mistake with my vote. I thought we talked something different here.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. Oh, my nudge.
Thank you for standing up for the people of Wayne and.
Officer, officer, can someone please quiet the crowd? The meeting is still progressing. You might want to stick around for closing comments, but I guess not.
Okay, I was confused of which one we're going here.
We're trying to vote. We're not done.
Just please reclarify again what we're voting on here. Make sure it's right here, don't screw this up.
We have a motion on the floor.
Right.
A mover and a second for the special ed law firm.
Okay.
Number M.
Okay, so that will be yes.
Or letter M, number one.
All right, my, my mistake, I goofed that one.
Okay, is everyone clear where we're at?
Yep.
Start the roll call, Mr. Moffitt.
Yes, Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
I can't either.
Mrs. Putup?
Yes.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
And Mr., Mr. Duffy?
No.
And Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so, old business, new business. Board comments.
I think I've had enough of the night. Make a motion to close.
I'm, I'm, I'm asking a question. Hang on a second. Any board comments on this side of the room? Okay. I did want to say one thing.
Go ahead.
If that's okay with you, Mr. Duffy. Okay. I just want to break. Please don't come up to the podium. The meeting is over. We're, this is the final comment. This situation brings me back to, this pandemic brings me back to the aftermath of 9/11 and how the American people came together on an important event that affected everyone. This pandemic equally affects everyone. Masks don't work unless everyone complies. It's important that we do this to protect each other. I don't understand why that's hard to fathom. I think what happened here is last year, when everyone wore a mask, I didn't hear any of this backlash, not at all. But what changed is someone brought up the word mandate. And while I don't like mandates either, I don't think anyone does, I still believe that the masks work and are needed so that we can keep school open, which I think as parents and educators, we all agree, is primary and important. We can't afford to have the children lose any more time from school. So I would like to have everyone just think about, thinking of everyone, not just whether you agree with your mandate or you think your freedom is being infringed upon. There's all sorts of rules and regulations. I watched a gentleman in Texas who pretty much almost stripped naked at a board meeting. I never thought I'd hear a president of a board say, "Please, sir, could you put your pants back on?" But he was trying to make a point that when he goes out into the world, he has to wear